This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home East Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and was posted on the Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. By exitter to my right and left of council chambers, in this meeting, no formal action will be taken.
Attorney, can you give us the pleasure?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Floss, yes. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Hi.
Councilmember Duncan Johansson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Friselli?
Here.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yeah.
Earl attorney Renaud?
Here.
Amber Administrator Huber?
Here.
Okay, public discussion, anyone on this? We have no member of the public. Let's get discussion. I mean, discussion, I'm sorry, discussion items, no for discussion items, no formal action will be taken. The first one would be the the fourth round affordable housing plan update.
I'll take the first crack at this part, but this is something, as we've been discussing for a few months now, we had a presentation by Brian Slaw, our affordable housing planner. We have a small working group, advisory committee. Matt Hirsch is on that committee along with several members of the Affordable Housing Corporation. I forget the full name of it, but essentially, we're, I wanted to use this opportunity to kind of remind us of the kind of tight timeframe we have in which to work. We're in the process of drafting the plan now, and the committee will have a chance to review that in advance, as will the planning board, because the action really takes place, the adoption takes place at the planning board. The deadline that the hearing we're targeting is June twelfth. The planning board meeting is already scheduled for June twelfth, and we have to have all of our actions wrapped up by June thirtieth. Council will then endorse that plan at the meeting on the twenty-fourth, if all goes well. What we just kind of, really what we laid out in those initial meetings with council is pretty much what's going on with the plan. We have our prospective need, which is being met primarily through our inclusionary development projects on track A and track C. We have some credits from the AHepa project, which is a hundred percent affordable project on across from the Cronin Building on South Six. So between that, we've cobbled together the forty-five units with bonuses and other things that we need. It was a relatively light lift. There's also a current need, which is basically a rehab need. So we will likely have a recommendation to and a commitment to establishing a rehab program to complement the one that the county has, and we'll be working with with our planner and kind of, we're gonna, it's probably gonna be broad strokes and strokes, and then we'll have to implement following the adoption of the plan. So it's a pretty straightforward plan. It's targeted at really just razor meeting our obligations. That said, what we've been discussing is the potential from this committee. Some other ideas have come up that maybe will convert into a memo of things we'd like to explore in the coming years. We don't have the time in this process to really go into things like accessory dwelling units and other kinds of innovative best about hundred percent affordable housing projects, things like that, that we might wanna think about as to kind of complement our inclusionary redevelopment strategy. And, you know, so that's kind of how we've decided to approach it with the committee because of the tight timeframe. Let's have a plan that we can, we know we can hit the numbers and we can, we can implement. And then we will, but we don't want to lose good ideas that we came up with along the way. But if we put them in the plan, you kind of have to do them, and we don't think they're baked enough. And we'd have to bring that before council in a way that we won't be able to have ready. But Matt, I don't know, if you had anything you wanted to report at this. But I just wanted to remind everybody of the deadlines that are coming. And I had told Matt Haley, who sits on the planning board, that I'll be drafting a memo to the planning board to just kind of prep them for this. I'm sure their attorney is very ready, because he's doing this in all the other towns. Everybody's got the same deadlines. So we are in good shape because of the numbers that we have, and so the plan is pretty straightforward. So as soon as we have a draft, I mentioned sharing it with the planning board, with the committee, but we will also happily share that with the council. So we'd rather collect input early rather than have problems later. So that's kind of where we are. We're hoping by the end of the week to have that draft.
Anything to add, Matt?
No, no, that's it.
So you're having a little.
June twelfth to the planning board, do you need that memorialized?
Yes, so we'll have the reso ready to go.
So they should have the reso ready.
We, I'm, I've asked Chris from your firm, from RCM, to have a template draft ready so that Roger can adapt and have it ready to go.
Sometimes they won't be able to vote on memorialization until.
No, we need them to. So, so that's why we want to feed them the information in advance, get any comments back. You know, not as a group, they can't discuss it outside of the public session. Again, I think when you see the plan, you will see it's fairly strategic, straightforward, and just if they can't get to that, they will have to have a special meeting to use that as an incentive to get it done, everyone is done, because we have to hit this target. And we're giving, as soon as we have a draft that we're comfortable with, we'll put draft all over it. We'll happily share it, you know, to Jennifer, to the, to the board, and solicit feedback individually if they have any concerns or questions. But I think because we're so, our, how we're meeting our numbers are through the projects that we know are in the pipeline. I, I'm just, it's not in other towns, they might be identifying new sites, you know. Yeah. You know, doing all this stuff that really needs. But we've done that to diligence through the redevelopment plans. So we're, we're hopeful that that'll come through in the plan itself, and, and it'll be in the format that's acceptable, looks a lot like what we've already got. She's also gonna be updating, you know, the background information, statistics, and all that stuff as well. So I'm hopeful that too, I appreciate your concern, but I also think, I think it can be done, because there should really be very few comments, and if so, they could be memorialized the same evening.
Okay, great.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm, nothing to add substantively to what Terry said, but yeah, so I, I, you know, our, the goal also, you know, is to look forward, you know. So a lot of other towns, they get their numbers, it's based on vacant land, it's based, it's based on this methodology that DCA put together. And basically, what other, a lot of other towns are doing is just kind of, you know, identifying areas that might be developable in the long term and writing them into our plan. We don't have to do that. Our plan really is met, and we have banked properties from the third round, which is great. So the strategy for this next, for, for, as we're in the fourth round, and while we've already met our obligation, is to really identify ways to keep chipping away at, you know, smaller sites. How do we, how do we, how do we put, you know, you know, that had, you know, smaller, smaller projects that are just integrated into, you know, into neighborhoods or into downtown building. So just really maximizing the tools that are available on the law. I think things like accessory dwelling units, it would be preferable to wait until the state acts, when the state has a pending bill that is moving very, very slowly. And so that, you know, things, things like that will, will be in a really good position to look at these emerging tools to prepare for the fifth round and hopefully be way out. When is the, when would the fifth round be?
Ten years of, so I guess, twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty thirty-five, I wasn't sure if it was from this year or last.
There was a gap period in between the round, you know, for.
There was like a twenty-five year round or something, right? It was quite a bit. So thank you, I appreciate, I just, because all of a sudden, it's gonna be like, hurry up, we have to do all this stuff. I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to get it back on our radar.
Any other questions? Maybe seeing there's none, we're gonna move to item number two, which is the liquor store hours of operation.
So this is an interesting one. This came up there, as you know, at a request for one of our local businesses had requested, could we stay open beyond our, what has been our historic practice of ten P M? The very persistent person, you know, so you referred, mayor referred this to public safety. There wasn't really, from a public, you know, police standpoint, they didn't really seem to have much substance. But then it was discussed also at economic development, at which point, if I'm not mistaken, the consensus was there was some receptivity to extending the hours to midnight, seven days a week, from ten to midnight. One minor complication in my narrative was in looking at the ordinance kind of in preparation a little more closely. The language is ambiguous, to say the least, in the ordinance. And both, you know, myself, Aaron, and other members of your firm, all can make credible cases that either, yeah, it's currently allowed till midnight, under their current language. It's currently allowed to one thirty A M, or it's currently ten P M. So clearly, there's some language reparation, but rather than try to debate what it currently is, the practice is ten.
Ten P M.
There's a debate as to whether or not one thirty is or isn't allowed or midnight. But the discussion that the, the committee had was for midnight most days, with the exception of New Year's Eve. And so I guess I'm going back to the original intent of the item, rather than trying to parse the old language. It's probably better to survey the group and hear what your comfort is, because come what may, even if we decide it's ten P M, it's gonna be our recommendation that we update the ordinance to make it much easier for anybody with an interest in this topic to interpret this, the hours of operation, because there is a lot of ambiguity.
I'm sorry, if I may, just to kind of clarify, even though we're, there's some variations of the time, there's a ten, a twelve, or one thirty. The one thing that I, we've all kind of brought this inclusion is after ten, it's wine and malt liquor, it's not alcohol.
That's a state license.
Yeah, so even if you extended past ten, or if you wanted to go, if, if we wanted to read this and say, hey, one thirty is good to go, if that's the way we can make that happen. But your liquor would still be, like a liquor store would stay open, but they can't sell bottled liquor, they can't sell vodka. They could sell beer, they can sell wine, they just, that's the extent of it. So they're gonna have to cut some of their sales at some point.
And the only other thing I would mention is the one thirty is the hour in which a bar can pour for on-premise consumption. So that's where that magic number, I think, came from. And that's been the case, I look back, this ordinance hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-one, just to, just to give you that history there. And then it was like late eighties was kind of when it was established in various forms.
And I think a consensus, a consideration should be made, not really losing right aid and possibly losing another liquor store, that, that, that consideration should be considered when the decision is made to extend, if should you decide to extend, to extend the hours, that, that should be done. Because they have less place to spend their dollars in H B, and I would like to see dollars stay in H B.
Oh, I forgot one thing, just if I might, real quick. The, one of the requests of the Economic Development Committee was to speak to the other operators that is, is, you know, is this just, I mean, we don't have that many, so it wasn't a huge task. So we reached out to Pinos, which owns a bar, but also owns a liquor store. We reached out to Park Liquors, and, and those are the two that really meant the half of the, the off-premise sales, you know, primarily. And Park Liquors, which is the one next to Park Deli or right there, was very interested as well. Pinos was on the fence, but they have the bar, so they could sell, they could sell beer from the bar after the, you know, you know, so they, it was, it did benefit to them, they weren't against it, but they just didn't see the number. So I just thought I'd share that in case that was important to you to know.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a basic question, are we looking at setting two sets of hours, one for packaged goods, you know, on the sea, you know, a plenary seat, and then a broad seat, which is packaged goods and, and a bar service? Are we looking to divide or treat buying in a packaged food store for takeout versus any of the bars thing?
The current ordinance is that way. And so, I mean, that's, I guess, I was, but, but I guess, I guess that's, that's up for discussion, if you want to distinguish them or not.
No, I, I think we should, but.
Yeah, but that's how it is, it kind of sets it up for on-premise, is these are the rules, off-premise, these are the rules, but then the language gets a little contorted in between.
We're gonna have to do a lot on, no matter what we do, Matt, we'll do a lot.
Also, what I was gonna say is, is, I mean, you have options, and you can kind of go in any which stretch you want. If you choose to make any changes to the ordinance, I would recommend that when we make those amendments, we clarify what is for on-premise consumption, which is like a bar versus off-premise retail, and what is, you know, silly things like what is defined as a malt liquor. I mean, we can all look it up, and we kind of know, but it's always helpful if those things are in. So some of those structural changes, I would, if you're gonna make any changes, we should clarify them and make it easier to read. So the fact that we're all sitting here and kind of going, well, it could be this, or it could be this, we can clean that up regardless. If you choose to make any.
I would like that very much, as I said, we make our language very clear, so there's no ambiguities.
Yeah, but then the next question would be, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, if you want, if you want to make changes, that's now the question that's being posed.
So at economic development, we, we thought twelve would be reasonable. We didn't think one to one thirty was reasonable.
That's, I think that's a good time to.
Question on that, though, was that packaged goods or on-premise?
Package station and on-premise would be till.
One thirty.
So then the question would become, because then there's that third bucket, which is, I am a bar, but I can sell a packaged good. You see, you see what I'm saying? So I go to the bar, the bar's open till one thirty, are we gonna liquor, do you want it just a retail-only location to close at twelve, but the bar can, can continue to sell a packaged good if someone wants to leave a one and grab a six on the way out, you know?
But I think that's the, that's the carry part that you can't carry out.
Well, that's, that's where I say that's a little.
And that's what the clarification.
That's the clarification, so as.
Because then we're saying two different things, and, and we need, the language needs to be clear.
It does, and, and, but you can, and I, and I only throw it out there to say that there's, there's another bucket they may want to look at. So you have your, I'm only a retail store, how do we treat that? I am a bar, how do I treat that for onsite consumption? And then that third bucket is, I'm a bar, but I also have the ability to sell a packaged good, how do, how do you want to handle that? You don't have to, you could say, hey, look, packaged goods, midnight, that's be all, end all. If you're a bar, you can hang out, have a couple cocktails if you want, but at one thirty, you're leaving empty-handed, and you can do that too.
Um, for me, at least, what I would say is.
No, you can't take anything.
I was watching all the booze jokes try to come out of it.
I'm gonna tap in your basin.
Never mind, no, no. I've cut bad guys. I will, what I was gonna say was, I think that, it's just my opinion, would be that, as well generally broader is that the state alcohol laws are kind of uniquely restrictive and basically archaic. So I'm in favor of kind of loosening that up a bit. And for me, I think, now that we've clarified the three different buckets, I definitely want to leave the in-service at one thirty. I'd be open to pushing that back, I don't know if that's allowable, understatement, if anyone's interested in that. I'm okay with that, but one thirty's fine, I think that's basically fine. The liquor store that only exclusively sells liquor retail, that, yeah, I think we all agree, midnight is for that. And then I guess for the new bucket that you just introduced, can the bar that's gonna be open till one thirty also sell packaged goods? I'd say let them just do that till one thirty-two, I mean, I don't think it's.
It's an unfair advantage.
Which is probably where that language came from, was the bar was able to do it, and someone said, why can't I do it? You know what I'm saying?
And can I just throw one more wrinkle in? Because one of, one of the things that the ordinance amendment, the most recent amendment did, was it basically gave this kind of exception language, you know, that kind of gave, depending on how you want to interpret it, some of the benefits that the bars had, i.e. stay open past ten. But then the flip side was true, on Sunday mornings, it gave bars the ability to sell off, off-premise during nine to twelve on a Sunday, which I guess is legacy, you know, God's Day kind of stuff. So, you know, I wasn't, I was more, we were more focused on how late they stay open. But I guess, if, since you've mentioned this recipe, you know, recipe, like giving a strategic advantage, the ordinance as it stands now allows a bar to sell package in the morning on a Sunday, but not pour, you still can't pour nine to twelve using packing. And so, you know, I guess I was focused more on, let's not mess with the start times, and just mostly focus on what, you know, clarifying these end of days, because that's where the confusion came. But I guess you mentioned that, you know, I wanted to be clear that we did give the bars some ability to have in nineteen ninety-one to start selling a little bit earlier than they used to be able to, to in parity with the packaged goods. At least that's Terry's interpretation of why they did it, I was not there.
They didn't have Matt then, huh? Because Matt doesn't be like, no!
If nobody else has another, I, I, I'm in favor of the later hours, but I think I have a practical question as well. I'm not sure that like packaged goods till midnight. I think packaged goods, we should expand it to maybe eleven in service till one thirty, but is there a real market in that?
We have three liquor establishments.
It's up to the business owners to stay open as early or late as they want. I'm just wondering if realistically, you know, there is a more, and then that's just more of a.
Let me try to answer it this way. The emails that, the numerous emails that I've been getting on this one particular subject, and at least ten phone calls when he decides to go, a day on this one particular subject. So I started kind of, because it became too much with this, me dealing with this one individual. But then he went out and got an accompanying person, we have like three really places in town that sell, you know, stores that sell. So the two that really sells, that we've looked into this, with the Pino, you know, has a bar, so people can stay in Pino's and drink until one thirty, and that's fine, they just can't sell hard liquor on the other side. So with that said, they were asking for later hours, because they went out and they were so kind to give me an ordinance from another town and say, other towns are doing it, why can't they? So with that being said, I think.
Are they on our borders?
Yes, they're on our borders.
Okay.
So bordering towns are doing it, so with that in mind, I, I think a midnight would be fine. I don't see, in our little sleepy town that really locks down at ten o'clock at night, I don't see a lot of people driving out to make this happen, and you keeping staff enlightened, but that's not my decision to make.
That's.
Our decision is to say, okay, we looked at it, and in all fairness, let's give you the two more hours to stay open. Pino's, they're a poor place, so they can stay until one thirty, so let's, let's be fair to everyone and give everyone an opportunity.
Yeah, I think that they, they think there's a market, and I trust.
Yeah, I know Stephen Chavandu, I was just wondering how everybody else felt about it, but I'm good with it. As long as it's consistent across the board, everywhere, for everything, no more.
They were so kind to give me those ordinances, yeah.
You know, if it's a Tuesday with the letter Y in it, then one o'clock, you know, with your shellfish.
Sunday's the only one that's treated a little special.
Just like Bergen County, no shopping on Sunday.
So do you want to eliminate that as well?
The Sunday?
The Sunday thing?
No, I would leave Sunday alone.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to open up Sunday.
Yeah.
I'm trying to maximize flexibility here, we're trying to maximize alcohol, I'm trying to maximize.
Yeah.
But I, I think, I mean, there's, what's the real logic behind keeping it for some? But also, I also kind of just getting back to the other point, I know, I get the unfair advantage in theory, but this, just to clarify, was that what the existing interpretation and practice of the ordinance is now? That Pino's would be allowed to, or I guess Park Pub, I don't know if they sell packaged goods, but would they be able to do that till one thirty now, and be pulling that back to align everyone?
I believe that was our interpretation of it right now, whether or not it's accurate, but that's been, there's been no prohibition on that.
Right, and I just don't see, like, I, I'm not sure that there'd be that many cases of folks that are looking to buy it that way. And also, like, so we're, we're helping out the, the businesses that don't have that advantage now. I don't think we need to kind of like pull back what, you know, and again, I don't know if they're selling a single package, but I kind of like the idea, in case if someone out in town really decides they need something last minute, one o'clock in the morning, they, they would have.
They don't need to be drinking, they need to be in the bed.
Hey, no, I know.
I don't care as long as it's.
Well, but what does that, what does that mean to the Sunday morning? So you want to change Sunday morning, or you want to keep Sunday morning?
I don't care one way or another, as long as everybody's treating the same.
Okay, so treated, packaged goods are treated one way, and poorest places are treated the other. So all packaged goods are one way, and all poor places are in the other.
Well, currently.
And then.
They treat everybody the same.
Yes.
It's up to them to do, to sell.
What about the third bucket that is Pino's, that is both? What do they get?
They have the one side say, you know, what they do now, they, yeah, they're pretty, pretty scrupulous about telling people, so, you know, you can't bring stuff in, and, you know, they're a couple nights with slaves, and they say, you know, we're closing up, so. That's up to that, that's up to that, but I think everybody, as long as everybody's treated the same.
We're taking our America back, everybody's gonna treat us fair.
What I will say is, I don't.
What, what's second attorney up? And councilor's a person had a question.
Terry had mentioned, with the exception of New Year's Eve, what does that mean? There's no limit? New Year's Eve, the bars can stay open, I think, till four A M. And then, this is the language that was another confusing part of our ordinance, that I thought that they could stay open till one thirty, but it might, ironically, even though I think it said one thirty every other day, except New Year's Eve was midnight, the selling of package. So it's, it needs clarification, but New Year's Eve, the understanding is it's a late night. The, the, both establishments, types of establishments would be, you know, what do you call it? Staying open a little bit later, just because of the midnight nature of the evening. And Mayor, in fairness to Matt Hirsch, he's had his hand up a couple times.
No, I, I've.
I'm, I'm interested to understand better the con, the context here. I personally am not ready to just walk into a meeting and start talking about liquor hours without any knowledge of this discussion, except a bullet point on the agenda. So I am, I'm not prepared to move forward, but I would like to know a little bit more about, like, you know.
What prompted it?
Do constituents want this? Do Highland Parkers want this? Is this something that people want, I mean, it's, there's gonna be the only establishments open late at night, you know, except for Akiki, you know, which is open at one in the summertime sometimes. So that's, I think that's something that I'm, I'm definitely considering. You know, and I'm not, I'm, you know, I have, I have opinion, I have, you know, opinions about this stuff too, so it's.
We all do.
Yeah.
And I want to, you said something that maybe wanted, I should have led with an apology. The reason this all, I had intended to get you guys a memo.
Because I don't know what our hours are, I don't know what our regulations are, I don't know anything.
As we're discussing it, I'm realizing, and I had that all, and I got really hung up on the language, and then I invoked Aaron, and they got hung up on the language. So I had intended this to be a much more structured discussion, so I do apologize. And there's no need that we have to come to a consensus tonight without more information.
What are the current, what, what we currently have?
That, I had it, I had it all teed up, and I couldn't make the grid, because it, I, I, what I really have to do is one, they said, here's our practice. Here's what I think the ordinance says, here's, and then that's where I got stuck. So the intention was to have a memo that you would have looked at in advance, and I just, I, I couldn't do it, because I needed, I, Eric didn't get it until Friday. So, so what I think I was gonna offer is.
Maybe we should table it until we get all our languages.
I would have pulled it off the agenda, but I, I thought.
Let's, 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 let's possibly table it until we get printed documents in front of everyone, clear language.
I do want to say that going into this, I am fine with the hours as is, I just want to say that.
Didn't go through two standing committees?
It did go to the committee, yes.
It went to two different committees.
It went to public safety and went to economic.
But we're going into the summer and the holidays.
And this is where they make the bigger bets, right?
And we're going into one meeting a month, this isn't gonna happen until when? So I think.
It won't happen till August.
Yeah, so I think we.
August. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna miss.
Go to one meeting a month.
Still June and July.
Yeah, but by time we go, we're still in discussion. But I say, by time it gets the, the next meeting, which is June, get on the June agenda for continued conversation.
Session agenda?
Work session agenda, work session, and we meet once a month. Then first, if it moves forward, then the first would be, first reading would be July, and second, if it's gonna be finalized, would be August.
Yeah. How, would you feel comfortable having a memo that we could discuss prior to a vote in June or July? Or do you need?
Sure, I'm just wondering what the.
Would you prefer to have another work session on this, or is the memo that Terry can create, is that something that we can move forward? Because it seems to me like we're relatively close to a consensus, and I'd rather move forward with something before waiting till August, if we can. And it seems like we could do that with a memo. I have a feeling that the public is gonna want to know about this, and is gonna want to see this discussion in person. I have a, I just, I just, that's my sense. But I think that that's also, you know, I, I think a memo would be fine, but I'm just wondering why, is there, are we in a, are we in a time crunch? Is there a hurry?
We're just checking, if I may, would the, this would be done in ordinance, by ordinance, right? Not resolution, so we'd have to have like the one.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. It's three months, really. Three months really.
Right.
To get it done.
I mean, there will be opportunity for public comment, plus like this was on the agenda tonight. I don't know if we have anyone on Zoom. Um, uh, you don't have anyone here.
No, but you would have to break it up for first reading after we get second reading, that's why I say August.
I guess I'm kind of sensitive to both positions, but I think, um, both Matt's positions, but I think, um. I mean, maybe we have some time here to kind of like, since I think like you said, like we're getting close, we, we have a little more extended discussion, kind of like layout again, I guess those sort of the. Um, what they, they, there, you try to go over real quickly with the, again, with the, um, existing hours. We think the existing ordinances and requirements are in ours. And then maybe try to resolve it right now.
I, I thi- I, I, I think. I agree. I think that once we have a memo, structured memo proposing what it is that we're trying to do, then if. You need another meeting, another work session like this, because it came out of both committees, public safety and economic development. And if we need another, once we table and say, this is, this is what it is, and do a layout, if we need to have another. Work session to discuss, we should.
Public safety and economic development? So basically the entire council has, has, has had their eyes on this. Exactly, I have not.
Are you on public safety?
No, I'm on neither of those committees.
Okay.
So I am.
That's why it's.
Unprepared to even discuss this issue.
And I understand, but when things go to committees, it comes to committees and from both committees that discuss, we discuss it here. And we're following all the rules as it pertains to discussion.
Sounds like everybody else has had that discussion.
And it, we're following all the rules when it comes to discussion, and this is where we are, we're at discussion. We fell short, apologies, that we did not put it in a memo format so everyone would have an opportunity to digest it. What we're suggesting is that we will put it in a memo format with everything broken down, so everyone will have another opportunity to look at it. But, um, three people on economic, three on public safety, they discussed it, um.
So I'd be alone, no, then, I mean, but I'm just, I'm saying, like, what is, what is the purpose of this?
The purpose of this is that.
I know you got some emails from an operator. I'd like to hear from the operator, then maybe they should.
Maybe you should go visit the operator.
No, maybe they should come to us.
The operator did come to us twice, twice, twice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, he, he has, he's, he's come for public comments.
He's not shy about coming here and giving his opinion.
To where?
The council meetings. Last year, last year.
Last year.
Within the last six months of last year.
I know. I, I think it's at least three. To extend our hours? Yeah, I would have to go back and look then, I, yeah. I mean, but.
Yeah, other issues too, but I remember.
And you did, he did.
Yes, he had some other issues, but.
But he added that in there too.
I mean, we didn't discuss this at our goals and objectives, you know, we had no heads up about this. This was, I saw this on the agenda. And that was it.
So with all due respect, council member. When the goals and objective, this was not a goal to extend liquor licenses hours to midnight. That was, that would not have been a goal, cause that's an established rule. One of our, one of, as governed as, as you govern the town and we govern what we do, we listen to what exchanges people have and what their needs are. And a merchant has come to us, two of them now, and say, this is, this is something that they would like us to consider. They provided ordinances from other towns to say, here is what other towns are doing. We would like to be in the competitive edge of doing business, and this is what they propose. With that, I took it to economic development. And then I was concerned about what is the safety of making sure that no one gets hurt in town if we're selling liquor later, so it went to public safety. So that's why it went to these two committees and because you are not on, in of the two, that's why you didn't hear about it, but. This is why we're here in a work session to discuss all of it, so.
Yeah.
Now you're brought up to speed. I'm taking responsibility, saying we fell short of not putting a memo together and dis- distribute amongst all, so everybody would have had a fair opportunity to have ready. What we are willing to do now is to get that memo out and just a, a complete breakdown of. What is the current rules are and what is being proposed? And to see if we could. Keep that advantage, economic, economic advantage here in our town, rather than somebody going to New Brunswick or Edison to purchase. If we keep our people here purchasing, that's hopefully more economic development for, for our merchants and our business, businesses here in town.
Just real briefly, I, I think that's a good compromise. And maybe to, so everybody has, has the same background. You know, very, very short summary of, you know, there are not, there, there aren't twenty liquor stores in town. So, wh- which is a good thing and a bad thing. Uh, maybe just a short summary of what, what the history is doing. You know, people requesting it. Um, so that everybody's up to speed on.
The memo is half drafted, so that shouldn't be a heavy one. It got stuck on the ordinance.
To get that circulated.
We tried it, even today in our meeting, we, we're trying to get the there, there, but we didn't get the there, there, and we're still not at the there, there. So once we get clarity on the language about poor, not poor hours, one thirty, twelfth, four o'clock at night, we'll put that out there and everybody will have it. I wanna make sure that everyone feels that, you know, nothing is being rushed and everybody's comfortable with what's being said or proposed.
Sure, so it sounds to me like, like, I guess the hang up with the, um, ordinance is that it's just very vague and kind of just maybe outdated and unclear, so. I'm not sure if it's worth investing too much time trying to unravel what that mystery is. I mean, but I think we understand that the established practice, what we're looking to, you know, clarify in the, uh, ordinance. Um, uh, but where we are right now in that practice is, uh, at ten o'clock for. Retail, then one thirty for poor, and then this, that, it's one thirty for the.
So it's like two people telling you to report.
We don't get, I, my interpretation is it doesn't go there. Where, you see that a little different.
But do we know what the practice is?
But I think our practice has been, we haven't weighed in on that.
Okay, so that's sort of interesting, I guess, a question where, so I guess the only question is really where do we think it should be?
Um, uh, the, today there was a mention of checking with ABC to see if, were any rules around that. Um, maybe our attorney, um, you can.
Happy to do it.
Thank you, appreciate that. So we can get more clarity, so we, we try to take away the ambiguities that, that we're currently facing.
Yeah, no, we're happy to do that, uh, I'll get you that information, include that in the memo as well.
Yeah.
E- either way, whether you choose to make a change or not, I still think it's a benefit to. Suggest changes to the ordinance in terms of just clarifications, even if we say we're gonna stay with exactly the words that are in there, but we just want them to be easier.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I think that that adds to a lot of the confusion, one way or another, you know what I'm saying? So. At a bare minimum, I, I think we can all agree that that should happen, just so. We're not around this table a year from now going, how do we want to?
I need to read the organs.
You'll, you'll, you'll stare at that sentence a long time.
It's the, it's by semicolon, send him a copy of it. All right, that, yeah, so we get a copy of the old with the update, what proposed discussion from tonight.
But the, but the committee suggestion is, uh, midnight.
Midnight, correct.
Yes, we will, yeah, no, we will have all of that in the committee and everything, cause it came from both. It's not just, it came from all, the both of the public safety and economic development, right?
Yes, sorry, so public safety wasn't. You know.
Right.
We were more concerned about, you know, the.
And that's why I sent it to you, because I was like, this is a public safety issue, you know, let me discuss it with the chief and see what the chief says, so. I sent it there and I sent it there, so. Okay, all right, so I think it, it's only fair that we. Get everything in writing, send it around, and then if we can move on from there, then decision can be made. And no reply, or just. Okay, any other discussion on this one? So the consensus is we'll get something this week. A couple of the old ordinance with the, the proposed and the updates. Thank you.
And the adjacent town ordinances, please.
That would be helpful.
I think I have it, so.
I definitely have.
Okay.
I have the one, but I don't know if you. Yeah.
Whatever they have.
Addison, we got. Addison's.
We have. Writing. All right, we're gonna move on from that, and we'll table temporarily until we get the language out. Human Relations Commission, Black Lives Matters. And I'm gonna turn this over to council member Jason. To just add a few. Um.
Yeah, so I think the, uh, impetus behind this was the, uh, the recent removal and I guess maybe it's not too recent anymore. Um, of the, the large, uh, Black Lives Matter mural on the road in, in DC. Um, and this is sort of, uh, you know, is a desire to. Um, touch up power of Black Lives Matter, uh, mural in response to that.
No, 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 no. Clarification that has been in discussion since last year about redoing it.
Hmm. Okay, um, kinda, I'm still new to the human relations commission, we just started discussing this a, a month or two ago. Uh, but, um, I know that was sort of like, maybe it's the more recent, like, urge to, like, kind of move this forward. Um, but I guess that, like, context of, um, it. Um, becoming a bit more shabby over the years, where normal wear and care. Um, and a continued commitment to affirming that value that the commission, you know, unanimously agreed that should move forward and. Uh, get it looking, uh, right again. We, all there is to it, I think, more or less speaks to its.
And, and.
And, um. And then Norma, uh, took a look at the proposed resolution, caught a few things that we could clean up. Um, but I, you know, I am the commission, only recommend moving forward with, um. The repainting and touching up of the mural.
Council member here.
Do we need a resolution to repaint it or can we just repaint it?
We don't, uh, it's, it's, let me try to put it this way. I'm not sure if we need a resolution to repaint it, but I remember when we did it, there were some people in town. That was not. Open to having it there. And one person took a truck and ran over the paint while it was still wet to make sure. And so they said that, um, it was just done by the mayor. And so therefore we're trying to build consensus here, to, that's why it's here and be discussed that we do this, so they see that we're supportive. And that, you know. We want, this is something that should the entire governing body say yes to, this is something that the governing body feels strongly enough about and will support. And we'll do it in a resol form, so they can see consensus across the board. So it's up to each and every voting member of the council to say, yes, this is something they wanna see move forward or not.
Uh, council member.
No, I just. I tainted you, I say yes.
Yeah, you know.
I mean, I, I, um, I think we're jumping through hoops that we don't need to jump through. I think we all agree that we, if we're gonna have a mural, if we're gonna have something that stands for something, it shouldn't look like crap. And so I, I would hope that we can just agree that painting it is a good idea and. I, I don't. I guess I'm still. Not sure why we need to do all the other things, which I think we should. It's, it's in our purview, it's on our street, we did it once before, it's the same resolution. I think we should paint.
We didn't have a resolution when we did it. It was in the middle of COVID, then this was done, there was no resolution when it was done. And so because of the, the, the back and forth and back and forth, we said, let's do a reso or an ordinance to say, this is what we're gonna do and move this forward, so we are clear on what it is that we're doing.
I think.
Yes, our attorney.
If I may, and I, maybe this will clarify, so I think there's, there's the initial question, which is from a structural. Statutory perspective, does something like this necessitate a, a resolution? And to that question, the answer would be no, it doesn't necessitate it. But I, I personally, and I, and I, I agree with the mayor, there are times where. I believe that putting things on resolution and doing them in the public, even if it's not required, still has an added benefit in that it, it. Gives the appearance that not only the council of the public was involved in the decision-making in the process. So the resolution here is less about the financial requirements and more about. The symbolic nature of this is why we're doing it, and this is, we're doing it as a governing body and it's not a one-off. So to, that's a lot of the reasons why, there are times where I'll recommend resolutions for things that we don't need it because I just. The nature of it. Makes it like a resolution would just be a better course of action to do it. I hope that clarifies it a little bit, yeah.
Um, so is there any?
Don't be doing a little point, cause I can't see you at a time.
Is it any financial cost, or are they gonna take it from their budget?
Well, no, I don't, but my understanding is that there's not even any cost that'll come out of the Human Relations Commission's budget, or like the Arts Commission who volunteered to help support and, and, uh, press the painting work themselves.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe we have paint available to do this and volunteers willing to step up to do it, so, you know, there should not be any, uh, financial cost or unforeseen circumstance.
And we want, I think it should, I think it should be a community event where, you know, you get a cross section of our community coming out and supporting this, you know, like we have supported. Just about everyone in town, a whole cross section of, um, the various communities that we have here, we've been there, we've been supportive, so I think it's gonna be. Similar to coming out and supporting all the various communities with. Various issues from time to time. Council member George.
Um, for the volunteerism too, the art collective was one who originally did it.
Mm-hmm.
Um. They would probably. Donate, you know, pick up a bunch of inexpensive paintbrushes and gloves for. Volunteer, you know, members of the community come out on the, whatever day we pick to do it, so we could probably get that done.
Uh, council member.
Um, so I was under the impression that it was a collaborative effort between the Highland Park Arts Collection and the Arts Commission?
Yeah, it was a collection of.
It was a collection. All right, fine, yeah, because I know the Arts Commission has been talking about this since last year. Um, and they're just waiting for the go-ahead and, and.
Cause, yeah, right, yeah. Since last year, they've been discussing this and wanting to see this happen, so.
So they can, one of the ideas that they had was, you know, they're fine with painting it as is, you know. Um, or if you wanted to be something, do something more creative with it, you know, they can kind of jazz it up a little bit, you know, put some quotes in the letters and. We make it more meaningful. They had some ideas that they can, they can.
It can be artsy with it.
They can be artsy with it just to make it like a more colorful mural, they'll be happy to paint it the. Way that it is, whatever, they can collaborate with the human.
Last thing in the world I ever wanna be is an art critic, I like it, I get it.
And council member Jason?
Yes, I think that had already been floated with the, uh, Human Relations Commission to discuss that, I think they landed. Uh, more or less on just trying to keep it as simple, like, uh, you know, pure kind of message as it is. Um. So I'm certainly, I'm open to some kind of like agnostic on, on a lot of this, as long as we get it done. Um, in terms of the process, whether it's resolution or not, I'm kind of curious, I guess it sounds like there may be, um, some, uh, concerns, I'd be interested in hearing, um. What may be the. Uh, harm of not. Or a forebelling to resolution.
I, council member.
Um, it seems like, so when I look at it, it looks like it's like not centered. Are we able to center the message?
I don't know, I haven't paid it that much attention. I guess the art, the, the art folks can take a look at it.
It's more, because it's in front of a hall, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it was.
Right, I mean, it's, it's more in front of a hall than in.
The role probably isn't even.
Maybe.
Maybe it shifts over time too. Um, yeah, that, that's a good, I mean, I, I've noticed that I can pass that along.
Yeah, I think some of the letters need to be. Like moved up so they're all even.
If we're just repainting it, that's one thing, but I wasn't sure if this is.
Maybe it shouldn't be even, maybe it shouldn't be crooked, cause that's not like this.
I think it should.
No, it's on one side of the roof for very, mayor, wait, I'm sorry, you know what, I, I should have been clear. It's on one side of the roof for very specific reasons.
Yes.
And I'm wondering, I would love to see it in the middle of the room. I don't know if that's possible, but let's, let's see if maybe, maybe, maybe that's something that we can figure out.
All right, so.
Sorry, so, uh, cause we started with, we're repainting, so now we're kind of. Expanding it to altering and redoing it and moving it and making it larger. So the only, I, I will caution is, and, and we're going back to the initial question, we need resolutions and it's usually a cost factor to that. If the project goes from, we're just touching up the paint to, we are going to hypothetically, uh, seek a new artist and engage people and then go to, you know what I'm saying, you might. If the cost of that project with all of that starts to get well above the, you know, the threshold, you may then have to go out to bid, which would require a resolution. So just kind of keep that in mind as you look at what you wanna do with the project. No, I don't think we're looking to just sort of like, yeah, take it to that kind of scale. Yeah. We just wanted to put it back in proper form, and so whether I, I kind of misunderstood where Matt was going, I go maybe in terms of alignment, so there might just be some additional touch-ups, but I think. We weren't looking to go beyond that.
If it's just being painted, then no, then it's not an issue, I'm just.
Yeah. I just comment on all the options. So if, if touch-ups is, is gonna be way cheaper if you wanted to commission a brand new project and I technically paint over, that's a different beast altogether.
We're staying, we're staying simple, we're retouching.
No, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that my, my initial piece of advice didn't get misinterpreted into a, oh my god, this became much larger, so just to kind of give you the full spectrum. I think there's also an interest in doing it soon, I think the Human Relations Commission is, uh, is looking at timing it so that the, uh, event to kind of, uh, display and showcase it would. Be a lot of the Juneteenth, uh, flag, flaggers and that. So a larger redesign would delay that.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, that's great.
Council member. Um, I know this is like, uh, off to the human relations, but. Do we, we have so many murals in town, who manages that? Is it the?
Their private, no, they're, they're privately.
Oh, oh, they're private, okay. Okay. Um, so obviously, the, like I said, the Arts Commission would be more than happy to just paint this is, or do something more creative, but I think the consensus sounds like we just, we'll just.
Retouch.
Yeah, we'll just retouch it. Um, regarding the resolution, um, I had submitted some, um, protect, some corrections, um, for the resolution, so.
Can you share it with all of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, so I'm out of the.
I know, it's fine, we could send, yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if we wanna discuss the resolution itself right now, or do we have the corrections?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think they were kind of technical corrections, like there's a few details where, like, a date was off and that kind of thing, so like, I think, like, for me, it was just sort of like, you know, I think.
Oh, okay. They were just like. But everybody got it.
You know.
Everybody got it.
Everyone should take a look, and if they have, you know, any other feedback.
My apologies.
I, I missed it to you the first time.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, yeah, I, I just felt like, in, in reference to just making sure that in the resolution, we. It was listed that the Highland Park Arts Collective was the one who did it, and I just feel it's important to name the parties that, all the party, all the entities that were involved. And actually, like, the Art Commission and the Human Relations Commission, also it stated that it was painted in the spring of twenty twenty-one, it was actually painted in June of twenty twenty. We wanna make sure that we have those dates down, and I just felt that it was really important that.
Cause it was done after George Floyd, and George Floyd was killed in May of twenty twenty.
So the resolution also stated that it's, it's at May, I feel it's very important to put the actual date that he was killed in into the resolution.
May twenty-fifth.
Yeah, cause I think those things kind of matter, so if we can make those changes, so.
Oh, but, so where are we now? With all of that being said, and with.
It's a resolution.
Yes, the notice.
She's got the resolution.
Okay, with the adjustments, uh, of time and everything else, that's where we are, right?
I think so.
Just let me know if you.
Any more discussion?
Oh, I know one, one, uh, uh, technical issue came up was, in terms of the paint that we use, they're interested in maybe making sure that we're using the appropriate street paint that'll last longer. Terry's.
The record, the one thing in the whole thread that bugged me was, we used road paint, that is.
We did use road paint, okay.
That's why, I think the blue, beautiful orange color, uh, is because that is what that is.
There's still a visible op- my.
Somebody said it was slippery, that, that, it was road paint, but there are some additives.
On purpose, so that's why they thought it was.
There's some, it's like shark paint or something, the additives.
That, that doesn't.
But it may not work with road paint, that's the issue, we used it when we did those little murals with, uh, the NTP program, but those were taking regular paint. And adding an additive, so we don't wanna do anything to screw up, it is road paint, it is street qualified.
I think the skin mark, I think when they saw the skin, it was when that individual, that lovely resident of ours decided to run over. And to, to destroy.
So, we should block off the road when we do it, this, yes, security.
So that's why, when we say, hate has no home here, it has a home. All right, anything else? All right, so, uh, we decide.
We decide, yeah?
No, I, I. So we're gonna move forward so we can get this done for next month? I'm asking.
Soon as possible, yeah.
Yeah, cause they wanna get it done before.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's only a mo- month away.
Yeah.
I'm inspired.
So.
Do you want us to try for the, for next Tuesday to?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, that's the question, yeah.
I mean, we have, it sounds like we have between HRC and Norma's feedback, the, the basics for the reso.
All righty, any, any other friend, any further discussion? Okay, seeing that there's none, we're gonna move to public discussion, and we have no one from the public, anyone in the public, from public?
We have no attendees.
Okay, all right, no formal action will be taken, we have no attendance, seeing that, seeing that, no one may have a motion to close public participation. May have a motion to adjourn.
Soon.
See you all next week.